Okay, we're gonna go. Okay, we will then. All right, we'll wait to Commissioner Holmes return. He's got a... We're getting there. Okay, well, we'll reconvene from break. And our next item is gonna be presented from our county attorney, Patrick Jocksetter, regarding the resolution authorizing sale of remnant parcel of real estate to adjoining landowner and warranty deed regarding Fairview Road improvement in District 5.
Thank you, Chair. Back in 2013, the Henry County SPOST Department acquired right-of-way from the owner of 210 Fairview Road for the Fairview Road project. Part of that agreement that was made back in 2013 called for the county to convey back to the owner of 210 Fairview Road, a strip of land made up some parking that we took. In other words, when we widened the road, we took a row of parking off of this dental office, I believe it was. And in order to make them whole, we agreed that there was a remnant parcel that we had acquired, that we would convey that remnant parcel back to them. And that's the action we're asking the board to take today. We're really not selling it to him. We're really just conveying it because we've already acquired that right-of-way. All the money has already changed hands. So what we're asking for is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of this remnant parcel back to the property owner. Georgia does have a law that authorizes us to deal with these oddly shaped, relatively useless strips of property differently than we deal with all the other property. And that's the statute we're proceeding under. I spoke to Mr. Holmes about this one earlier today. This was, this was part of our right-of-way acquisition. And you'll be seeing a handful more of these because SPOST has done a lot of, of creative ways to resolve these right-of-way cases that involve us getting rid of some of these little excess strips of land that the county ends up owning. So hopefully, we're gonna get rid of a lot of these over the next several months. So we, and we recommend approval of this so we can go ahead and close this matter out.
Very good. Are there any questions for Mr. Jocksetter? If not, the floor is now open for a motion for approval. Got a motion by Commissioner Holmes. Got a second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, Mr. Jocksetter, if you'll move on to the next item.
Next item is a resolution approving a lease agreement between Henry County Airport, between the county and a company called Wanna Go Fast LLC. It's called a lease agreement. It's really a license to use the property for a day. Wanna Go Fast LLC is a company that puts on races. My understanding is that they, they allow people who want to drive their cars fast to, to find a course and basically drag race their vehicles. And that's essentially what this would be. They would do this down the airport, either the runway or the taxiway. The resolution you have in front of you, it has an error on it. It says that there's a $12,500 payment. It's actually a $10,000 payment. That's, that's my mistake. There were multiple versions of this floating around. The proposal before you is that Wanna Go Fast LLC will pay the county $10,000. In exchange for that, they will be entitled to use the airport property on September 30th and October 1st for these racing events. They will be required to make an application and obtain a special event permit. That special event permit process will resolve all of the requirements for them to do things like security and bathrooms and cleaning up and fire protection and those types of things. We also provided, in the agreement itself, they are required to do those things at our request. They're also required to provide insurance, to, to insure against any claims that may be made against us. And they also, there's also what we call an indemnity provision that requires us, if we are sued, we're gonna rely upon their insurance rather than our insurance. I can't protect you against getting sued. Anybody can sue you for any reason if something happens. There's an accident or an incident, something happens, there is a chance we would get sued. But we won't be conducting the event. They will be conducting the event, and they will be required to incur all the costs that go along with it. This proposal came from Commissioner Clemmons, and it will require, the airport management staff will have to, it will require FAA approval. Because the FAA, because of the grant money we're operating under, requires us to limit activities to aviation-related activities. So the resolution will, will authorize both the execution of the agreement after we get FAA approval, and we'll also direct staff to start, to continue, I think they've already started the communication, but continue the process with getting the FAA approval.
Okay. Are there any questions? Yes.
This lease, what's it tied us to? I know we don't have a contract, so...
There actually, there is an agree, there is a, the lease, the document called a lease is a contract. It requires us just to make the land available to them and get out of their way, essentially. And then they are required to do everything else.
So we don't allow them to bring cars? Are we limited to, or not limited to, street legal cars? That's what I'm concerned about.
It doesn't address what types of vehicles are...
Right, because if we're looking at methanol, alcohol, and nitrous cars running down the straightaway, I don't know if we have the public safety available to extinguish these type vehicles. That's gonna take, that's gonna take some additional extinguishing agents. And if these type cars burn on the runway, is it, who's responsible for fixing the runway if it damages the asphalt?
Well, they would be responsible for turning the property to us, generally in the condition we give it to them, so...
And if you go to the website, too, this, my website, I assume that you guys didn't look at, well, we have to look at the website of the company. It's limited to Ferraris, Lamborghinis, and Porsches. This is a, a high-level cars. It's not regular racing cars. It's limited to Lamborghinis, Ferraris, and Porsches. And they run for half a mile down the strip. You can go on the website and look it up.
So they're street legal cars?
Yes.
And they're running a half a mile? So they can exceed speeds over 200 miles an hour? And there's a possible for fatalities?
Yep. There's a possibility for fatalities if it was 20 miles an hour.
But more, more likely at 200 than 20...
That's correct. That's correct.
Another question for the board. Bill, Commissioner Barnes?
Patrick, you talked about insurance. What, how much insurance will they be required to have?
We, we don't have a specific amount. And frankly, I don't like saying this, but frankly, their insurance doesn't matter to us too much. Our insurance is really what matters to me. We, they, whether or not they have insurance, their insurance won't cover us, period. I mean, it simply won't. They can provide us a certificate of insurance showing that they are insured. My recollection, let's see. They're required to totally indemnify us, which means they're required to defend us 100% against any claims brought against us. So the, to the extent they don't have insurance, they're still required to indemnify us. We could certainly add a specific amount, if there's a specific amount the board wants. We could, we could require them to provide us a specific amount of insurance. We could provide them to limit the vehicles to, to traditional, street legal, traditionally fueled vehicles. I don't know what language we would use, but fueled by typical gasoline. Somebody like you would have to help me with that language. We can certainly impose those requirements on them, and I don't expect they'd have a particular problem with them.
And will you clarify again, is this actually the FAA approved as well?
The FAA would have to approve the use of the airport property for a non-aviation-related event. And I, I don't know that that would be a particular problem. These events take place on airport properties pretty routinely.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barnes?
Patrick, I know down the, the runways over at the airport, we have these little lights for the airplanes and that sort of thing. And I guess, I'm assuming if they run over all those and tear them up, they'll fix them. But in the meantime, I guess my question is, are we just gonna shut the airport down and not let anybody land there? Or how's all gonna work?
I don't know how you could do both. I, I don't know how you could allow those cars to, to operate on the air, on the runway and allow planes to take off and land. I, I think that would be, that seems to me, that would be inherently disastrous to have both vehicles on those.
Mr. Tony to come and speak to that.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Chair and Commissioners.
I've reached out to several air, federally obligated airports that have held this event. And there are different ways that they went about doing that, where they actually had aviation activity concurrent with the, the racing event. They did, issued appropriate notices to airmen of the event that was going on, and they also did what's called a PPR, which is a prior permission required. They did some, either a 30 to six, a 30 to 90-minute type prior permissions required for airmen in the air to, to land. The way that I understood this event to be, when we met, when Commissioner Clemmons and I met with the representative from Wanna Go Fast, is they'd be utilizing, what they're asking for is they'd be utilizing the airport or the runway from 8:00 to 12:00 in the morning. This would be on a Saturday and a Sunday, so they'd use it from 8:00 to 12:00 to bring their cars on the runway. And then from 12:00 to 1:00, they would take a break. There are different ways we can do some aviation, add an aviation component to this event that makes it more favorable for the FAA. So, that being said, you can also, like I said, do the prior permission required where the, and issue this note, and where aviators are not, you know, prohibited, if you will, from landing. And there's obviously radio communication with the, with staff and the event goers that if an aircraft needed to land, they would, you know, get off the airport or off the runway and make it clear for an aircraft to land. So there are ways that it can be done, but we, obviously, the main thing is to stay in communication and go through the process with our, our local and federal aviation support team, which would be GDOT, of course, and FAA.
I have a question with regards to what revenues, what type of revenues will we make on this event?
Well, I think if you see in the lease agreement, they're, they're proposing to pay the county $10,000 to utilize the event. There are also other revenues that would probably be unseen. You would, depending on the type of traffic and, or advertisement and the type of traffic that they get, you could, you could have some people staying in hotels and restaurants. So there's unseen costs or uncalculable, calculatable costs, if you will, that we're not really figuring into the $10,000.
Is it free to the public, or is there a cost for citizens to view the race?
That would be set up by Wanna Go Fast, as I understand it, and they would be charging people to come see the event, and they would be charging their car, the people that were, you know, would like to enter a car into the event. And just to clarify, there, there are other vehicles besides just, you know, Porsches, Ferraris, but it is exotics. There's different classes. You've got naturally aspirated, you've got diesel. So, you know, you could in effect have a, you know, a sport utility vehicle that is souped up that could be on this thing. So there's Corvettes, there's a lot of different classes of cars. But from what I've seen on the videos, you're correct, they're all, they would all be street legal that I've seen. Now, I think a lot of these guys are, travel around for these events. That I know of, there's at least three or four federally obligated airports that have held this event. Like I said, I've reached out to those airport managers to get guidance. And in fact, I'm awaiting documentation from one, some forms and some middle, to sort of make the process a little easier, so I'm not having to reinvent the wheel, so...
What type of feedback have you gotten from those airports?
Very positive so far from all three of the, from all three of the airports that I reached out to, yes.
Michael, can you talk about how many people they've said that this event draws to the counties that they've been in?
Yeah, I think, and I think just from, from our market, just being that we're in the Atlanta market, I think it was very favorable for Wanna Go Fast, being that we're next to the Speedway as, as well. It kind of had that element where we're located. You know, it's hard to determine how much we're gonna gather because of, you know, this is be the first time in what I'm calling the Atlanta market. But I, I think from talking to Blake, if I'm not mistaken, they were drawing several thousand people. I think, you know, for us, it's an opportunity for the community to be able to see that there are other items that can be done or events that can be held at the airport. Again, we have to remember that it is an airport, and there is guidance that's given on that. And, you know, the, they understand that we have to do things like that in order to help ourselves be self-sustaining. So that's kind of the thing that I'm gonna follow and use the guidance with both, you know, our local GDOT and FAA, as well as our consultant to help along in the process. And the, the other thing is I'm going to look to add an aviation component to this event, such as a, you know, we've got our Army Aviation folks that are there on, on the field. You know, they would, probably be a no-brainer for them to have some helicopter rides. If, if by chance I can get some type of aerobatic demonstration during that break period from one, or from 12:00 to 1:00, that's something else that could be considered as well. So the big thing is to try to wrap an aviation component into this, so it's not a non-aeronautical event. That really helps make it more favorable, you know, for the, the aviation community and, as well as the regulatory agencies that are overseeing what we do.
Okay, and other questions? Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, Michael, and I want to commend Commissioner Clemmons for trying to find some innovative ways for us to make some money at the airport, and I, I like that. But I do have the concerns about the insurance. Mr. Jocksetter, you heard him say they just gonna cover whatever. And, and I, I'm having issues with that because what if whatever is nothing? So I, I think we need to have a figure. And I just wondered during your time, Michael, have you had conversations about the insurance with any of these other airports? And what did they require?
I don't recall asking that question specifically, and we've only met with Mr. Hutchinson one time. He's the representative with Wanna Go Fast. So that could be something that we could determine specifically, you know, in future meetings, if that's something that, you know, that we need to discover.
And Mr. Barnes, what we could do is, we could go ahead and impose, when, if the board approves it, we could impose a requirement. I would recommend, you probably want something like $3 million in insurance coverage. Typical insurance policies have thresholds where the rate jumps way up. And a lot of times, that policy is from $3 million up, the, the rate jumps dramatically. Might be a good idea to put a $3 million policy requirement on it. And that's, shouldn't be a burden on them. I would expect they're carrying a lot more than that.
What kind of timeframe are we on to try to get this done? Is this something that Commissioner Clemmons could negotiate and try to work out this $3 million policy?
Well, what they were looking at is being able to start advertising and put us on their website that this will be the Atlanta venue. And I'm assuming that if we don't say that we can start the negotiations, because that's what this was really about, can we start the negotiations and add these amendments, like you're saying, with the $3 million? If it doesn't come back favorably to the agreement to us, then we can always say, we're not gonna go with it. But this resolution is basically to start the conversation going.
And I'd recommend we just tell them, we need $3 million. If they, if they do it, they do it, and we don't have to come back.
And this doesn't, this doesn't tie us into having them here.
Clarify that. Okay, Commissioner Wilson? Yeah, this is just to start the negotiations, based on what we stated. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay. We're now call for a motion.
I'll move.
Why don't you, if I could suggest, require $3 million in insurance and require likewise that they ought, they, they cooperate with Mr. Tony in bringing in an aviation or aeronautical related component into the project? And let's just force them to do that.
Absolutely. They, just to add, they've actually, they were the ones that actually suggested that, and knowing that they worked with these other airports. In fact, they were, they were the ones that actually gave me the contact numbers to these airport managers, so I could contact them and get their feedback and get the information that I, that I need to keep the process moving forward. So they have been very helpful in that regard.
Okay. Very good. So we've got the motion, again, to include the $3 million insurance along with the aviation aspects of it. So we've got a motion. Is there a second? Got a second by Commissioner Holmes. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jocksetter. Okay, Mr. Jocksetter, we have another item.
Okay, next, ladies and gentlemen, the Board of Tax Assessors, the Henry County Board of Tax Assessors, has provided the Board of Commissioners with notice that the Board of Assessors intends to appeal three properties, property tax valuations. There is a, a provision in Georgia law that says that if the Henry County Board of Tax Assessor, or if any Board of Tax Assessors wishes to appeal a decision by a hearing officer of a property tax assessment, and if the amount in controversy is less than 20% of the value, that they have to give notice to the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners can prohibit the appeal. And the situation here is there's three properties. The properties went to the Board, went to a hearing officer. The hearing officer reduced the value below what the Board of Assessors believes a fair market value is. And the Board of Assessors, in its duty to assess property at fair market value, wishes to continue that appeal to try to get the properties assessed back at fair market value. You are not required to do anything. You can, if you so choose, move, make a motion, and prohibit the appeal. We recommend you don't do that. We recommend you do nothing and allow the Board of Tax Assessors to continue to do its job of trying to get these properties assessed at fair market value.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Jocksetter? Okay. Is there a motion to prohibit this appeal? Going once? No, to appeal the tax assessment? Okay, let me clarify. Is there a motion from the Board to, to prohibit the appeal? Okay, hearing once, going twice, the motion failed. Thank you. Okay. Then we now move on to the next item.
The next one, this next item is a continuation of a resolution that the Board approved in May of 2015, pursuant to which the county paid to the Henry County Water Authority $4 million for two sewer projects. It was the Fairview Road Sewer Project and the Henry County Airport Sewer Project. The Henry County Airport Project was divided into three phases. Phase one is under construction and should be completed by December 28 of 2017. The Water Authority has met with staff, and I understand with Commissioner Clemmons. They have agreed to commence phase two of the project. In order for them to commence phase two of the project, we have to amend the intergovernmental agreement that was approved in May 2015 to authorize commencement of phase two of the project. The money will came from, come from the same $4 million of SPOST money made available for that project. We have asked our county staff to determine whether or not there are sufficient funds available in those accounts to complete the project. Nobody can tell you with any absolute certainty that there is, because the construction portion hasn't been costed out. But the word I am told it is that we believe there likely is money. That, doesn't seem to be a great concern on our part that there's not sufficient funds. It's important to note, it's a SPOST project, so we have to do it anyway. So what we're, what this resolution will do is authorize phase two of the airport sewer project to commence. It, like, it also says phase three will not commence unless we can show that there will be sufficient money. And the project would commence upon written notice from the Chair that the county is ready to proceed. The Water Authority will retain funds to take care of all the expenses associated. Planning, designing, actual construction, if they have to acquire any right-of-way, I don't think they have to. And my understanding is, they have, they're working on the main sewer line out there, and they can change the scope of work and rebid the project to allow that work to continue relatively seamlessly. They won't, they won't have to go back to the drawing board to start this project over. So there's some, a little savings in time by doing it this way.
Okay. Are, are there any questions? Okay, the floor is now open for a motion for approval.
I move to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Clemmons. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Prince. Any further discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. We're now moving to our public comment section, where citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comment speaker form, or you will not be recognized, and you will be able to address the board for five minutes. We will begin with our first public comment from Mr. Wayne Swanson Jr. regarding Nash Farm Farmers Market.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Wayne Swanson. I live at 3539 Jonesboro Road in Hampton, and I am a farmer. I actually have 32 acres. I raise grass-fed beef, lamb, goats, vegetables, and I have about 12 or 13 beehives. So we, in District 2, have been tasked with putting together a farmers' market at Nash Farm. And so far, we have 20 vendors who will be paying us $75 apiece for the vending fee. Looks like we're gonna bring in $1,500. We are all volunteers who are working on the project. We're very excited about bringing a boutique-style market to the county and to District 2. We, we're not looking for a flea market style, but everything has to be handmade, hand-produced, or grown by the farmer or the vendor. So far, the vendors are me with grass-fed beef, lamb, goat, and chicken if I can get it this year. Vegetables for the Georgia Women of Agriculture. The longest-running and continuous cooperative of African-American farmers, the West Georgia Farmers Co-op, will be present. And they have allowed us at this market to tag onto their grant with a company called Wholesome Wave. Wholesome Wave will double EBT dollars for any EBT customers to spend in the market. So they're gonna have a booth there. I will be the volunteer market manager. Nash Farm will actually have a booth in the market, and for the sole purpose of presenting Nash Farm for additional opportunities to rent venues. I spoke with Bill, the Friends of Nash, this week. The museum will be open. District 2's newest football community, Georgia Elite, will bring their football players to volunteer as greeters. And to help us out, we have a pony ride that's gonna be there. A gentleman's bringing his pony. And we are working on finishing our Kid Zone. So we have a couple of calls out for, for jumpies and moonwalks and those things. So we are very, very excited about the opportunity that the county's presented. Everyone's been great to work with. Commissioner Clemmons has been great in helping us get this off the ground as possible. And if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to have them. But I did want to just say that there are farmers in District 2. I know earlier we heard that there may not have been.
I would just like for you to clarify, the monies that you said, that money is being collected by who and going where?
That money will be collected at the market. It will go, Tim, we haven't decided whether it will be One Henry, I believe, or Henry County Parks and Rec.
So this is a Parks and Rec event? I just want you to clarify.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So that money will go towards, because we don't have a budget, so that money will go towards the, the market and other events we do out there. And we'll also look to do farm-the-table dinners there as well, from the farmers that are in and around Henry County.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you. Our next public comment is coming from Mr. Bill Tony regarding the Henry County Water Authority and the Henry County Airport.
Bill Tony McDonald, Georgia. I'd like to ask for possible an extension on this. If y'all would, you know, see if you can get a motion for me?
And your topic...
To get 15 minutes extra, if you don't mind, or...
There is a request to extend the five minutes. That hasn't yet been taken, so is there a motion to accept that request? Okay. There is not a motion, so... Okay, there's not a motion, so we'll reset it and start at five minutes.
Okay, I'm going to do the taboo one. Ms. Wood, when I told you, I asked you before the meeting to get an extension, you said, "What's it about?" When I said the Water Authority, you said no. Okay, this is a Freedom of Information. It's about Lindy Farmer's salary. I think he's well overpaid and due to time, I'm going to be running kind of quick through this stuff, but according to what I'm, this right here, he's, he got a 15, no, a 12 and a half percent increase in pay. He went from, from $266 to $300,000 in one year. What it looks like he's going to be doing this year, if everything goes to the way it's supposed to, in December, he'll be making $338,202.59. That is ridiculous. They're getting two mils of our tax money. I don't know if anybody realizes what, what the deal is with this, but when you buy a tag, part of your tag money goes to the Water Authority. Two mils of your property, they've collected $13,525,137.81 last year going to the Water Authority, over and beyond all their fees and everything that they've collected. I did a Freedom of Information to ask for some, some more, uh, accounting and, uh, hate to say it, Mr. Jockstetter, but they don't think, I guess y'all can handle it down here in the county, so they went to Atlanta and gave me an attorney, Mr. Thompson. Well, they, Thompson's agency is Justin B. Connell, attorney-at-law, wants to charge me just for some accounting, $735. The Water Authority does everything in their power to fight anything that you want to know over there. They're wasting money, they're, you know, they're giving out bonuses over there right now. I don't know if y'all know that they're giving bonuses to people. I don't know of any county employee that's drawing any bonuses. They got their own world over there and y'all are turning your head every time somebody says Water Authority. You don't want to go there. I've been told twice tonight, if you're going to talk about the Water Authority, you're not going to get any extra time. That's crazy. Let's look at that one again, because most people, most people don't know what, what kind of money the Water Authority is getting off that two mils. Y'all should be doing a referendum to do away with those two mils. I researched the two mils and they, they, they got the two mils when they first started up the Henry County Water Authority. They don't need the money anymore. They're self-sufficient. They're wasting money like crazy and everybody over there, if you look at the, all the employees, when they go to work there, they don't leave because they get such great salaries. And the county employees, they're, they're sucking wind over here. These people in the police department, they don't, they don't draw a decent salary. Over there, they get what they want. So, Mr. Uh, Mr. Wilson, I want to thank you for, for, for doing exactly what I thought you would do. You, you, you cashed in on everything, everything you, when we, when they took away the 15 minutes, you said you just asked for it, we'll get it for you. If you want to be a Commissioner and work for the people, that's what you need to do right there. You take your two mils back and you give it to the people. You give it to the people that deserve the money. If you're going to give raises and bonuses, give it to these guys in blue. They deserve it. Not some 300, over $300,000 a year, it's ridiculous. And by the way, a buddy of mine got killed drag racing. Pull up Ronnie Davis Racing, take a look what a racetrack will do and they don't even have any guardrails over there. That's the dumbest thing I've ever heard of. All right, I'll give you six, six seconds, ma'am. You have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Tony. Our next public comment is coming from Mr. Carl Swenson regarding ethics.
Carl Swenson from Stockbridge and I was doing a little research the other day because I'm a Falcons fan and I'm a Miami Dolphins fan. And I heard that, uh, Mr. Holmes, you played in the NFL. When I started looking at what you did in the NFL, well, you didn't spend all that long there, but something got my attention, really got my attention. There's a court case going on. Maybe you can see it this way. This is from the United States District Court for the Northern District of Georgia, Atlanta Division, and listed there as a defendant, or as plaintiff, is you. Wow, cool. Read some more and, uh, you know, heck of a lawsuit. As a matter of fact, followed up on it and there's going to be like 750 million that's going to be let out here pretty soon. And that pretty soon is going to be, I think, $166.66, $6.66 to you, minus, of course, whatever the take for the lawyers is. But this has to do with injuries received from being in the NFL. This happened, it was dated May 2nd, 2012. Now, why is that interesting? Well, it should be interesting to all of you because, um, were you, uh, yeah, you were a Commissioner on May, in May of 2012. Funny thing about that, now, I don't know, I don't know how you can put a legal document out there and, you know, swear to it as being true and correct, but if you did, according to this, you lived in Ellenwood, DeKalb, Georgia. Oversight? Eh, possibly, but very curious. Makes someone ask the question, "Where do you really live?" But this started, I started to understand a little bit more after I read this. Plaintiff Bruce Holmes suffers from multiple post-traumatic brain injuries with symptoms including, but not limited to, memory loss, headaches and sleeplessness. When you, Mr. Holmes, Commissioner Holmes, decided to run for Commissioner, did anybody ask if you were of sound mind? Because according to your testimony, you're not. That should concern every one of you here and it should give you pause to wonder why the cost overruns at the Fairview Park. Perhaps this would help to explain that a little bit. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, we will now move to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval for the minutes for the March 7th, VOC regular meeting and also for the March 8th Board of Commissioners Call Meeting. Were there any comments or questions regarding the minutes for those days? If not, we call for a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
We got a motion by Commissioner Barnes?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Clemens. Any further discussion regarding the minutes? All in favor? Any opposed? We will now move to item 16 regarding chair and commissioner comments. Are there any comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Prince?
I have one. We have a groundbreaking at Hemp Hill Road and State Route 138. It's Wednesday, March 29th at 10:00 a.m. If you're able, when we come, we'd love to see you out there.
And I would just like to add that Station 8, temporary housing is well on the way. I think that we are expected to be in in the next week or two back over at that location. So I would just want to commend staff for their expeditious movement and getting what needed to be done to get those guys back on the right side of 75.
Any comments? Wilson, Holmes? Any? I have none either as well. All right, regarding our upcoming meetings, we have the following announcements. We'll have a March, a, a call meeting on tomorrow, March 22nd, for the executive session to appoint the county manager. And then on April the 4th is a regular meeting and also April the 18th at 6:30 p.m. The April 9th, the April 4th meeting will be at 9:00 a.m. and the April 18th meeting will be at 6:30 p.m. We now call for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We got a motion by Commissioner Prince?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holmes. Any other discussions? All in favor? Thank you and have a good night.